We have absent Airport Tim Stonehouse, he was in Lansing today, testifying for a second committee on the trials and tribulations of freeze-ups and other winter challenges. And also Commissioner Coyne is absent, he's on vacation out of the city. We have five commissioners here, so would everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't have any announcements as such. This is a work session of the commission. Staff will have a number of presentations, I think they'll kind of tag-team it. And then what we'll do is we'll have questions from the commissioners, but the purpose of this meeting is to really gain input from the public, so we will, we're not going to be quite as formal as we are on work sessions as long as none of my fellow commissioners have an objection, but I think we'll get the public much more latitude to address us than typically occurs in a formal meeting, so, but we'll kind of, up to that point, have to be a little more structured. So, I guess without further ado, I'll turn it over to the City Manager, and he can begin.
Thank you, Governor. Can everybody hear me okay? Let me offer first welcome, thank you, Commissioner, thank you to our speakers today, and thank you to the public. I just want to provide a little bit of an overview of the week, and then turn it over to our panel. The format for the meeting is, what were referred to as cow call. And so, that's a little bit different than work sessions, in that most of the deliberations gone with the audience, not with the people up front. And the genesis for this meeting really comes from the extended weather that we've had this year, the weather maybe see, but really also the unusually long, the usually tall symptoms of the weather, that generally, given the amount of time that people have been snowing this year, have brought to them a lot of different questions that people might have been having for a long time, how do we manage snow, what are the rules, what opportunities can we have to people differently, and how could all of that information be brought forward in a way where the station can use it subsequently when their strategy is playing, in their budget processes, and maybe as a way to help move things like our masks and everything. And so, the format is really going to be, each one of our department heads, you have a component of responsibility for part of our snow management issues, giving up, providing a little bit of an overview of what they face, the information that they have. And then what we'd like to do is use that as a way that we both discuss, both with the city commissioner, but importantly with the audience, about different kinds of things we might be able to do, whether the lowline, fruit kind of opportunities can change, transformational change, other kinds of discussions that you might be, if people are interested in this manage our winter weather a little bit differently. I mentioned only two things, one administratively, fire exits, bathrooms, so they can be discussed. And then also tape recording this, it's going to be playing on Channel 21. And so, for anybody in the audience who might not have an opportunity to come down and participate directly with it, if you see this later on Channel 21, please don't hesitate to come down to City Hall, to the City Manager's office, and we'll make sure any of your feedback is shared with the commission. So with that, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to our first speaker today, Superintendent Scott.
There, is that a little better?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. As Bill mentioned, we're going to have the panel get up here and tell you a little bit about what each of the departments does. And the intent of this first part is really just to be educational. We're going to throw a lot of information out there. As Bill said, this is going to be available on Channel 21. After the presentation, we'll make this available on the city website, so that you can download it if you wish, or just leave it up there and look at it right online. The first part of the presentation is going to focus a little bit on some of the laws and ordinances, and what our police department has as a role involved with the snow management. Then we're going to talk a little bit, we'll move back to me, and we'll talk a little bit about the operation of the Public Works Department. And we'll look at not only the plowing of snow, but the removal of snow, and maintaining sidewalks, and the multi-use paths as well. And then we'll move to our Director of Community Development, Dennis Stackowitz, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about the planning aspect of things, and where we sit right now with some of the different planning efforts in the community, and how they relate to snow removal, and dealing with snow in this great winter city that we have. And then finally, Mona Lane, will talk a little bit about the operations within the Downtown Development Authority District, which now recently includes Third Street as well. So, that's brought on a little bit of change on how we do things, and it's even brought some change for the Public Works Department, and we've branched out in a little bit different direction with some of the changes of the Third Street District. So without any further ado, I'm going to have Captain Blake Rebo come up here, and we'll work through a couple of slides with the Marquette Police Department.
Thank you, Scott. Like Scott said, we all kind of work together in the city when it comes to snow, which we have a lot of right now, as you can see. The Police Department basically has kind of two functions when it comes to dealing with the snow. One is kind of working as a point of contact after hours for the citizens regarding road conditions, issues that may arise because of snowfall. Our officers are on 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, so we can kind of gauge what kind of problems the city's facing with snow, regarding like snowstorms and stuff. So, we can kind of report that to the on-duty supervisor, which we work quite well with at Public Works. And based on our information, they can disseminate resources to try to deal with those issues that may arise. Our second role is enforcement. And basically, we rely on state law, and we also rely on our city ordinances regarding enforcement. I'd like to kind of point out that, you know, the actual writing of tickets for snow removal complaints, or snow removal issues, is not our priority. We try to resolve it through education, through communication, and try to use the ordinances and the laws as a last resort. You know, there's a lot of unique situations here in the city of Marquette regarding snow removal, and where you can put it and where you can't put it. I, for one, who live in the city, have a shared driveway where I have to blow half of my driveway out to the front of my yard, and then into my front yard, and then the other half into my backyard, et cetera. So there's a lot of unique situations throughout the city, where when we get significant amounts of snowfall, we are called upon to try to mediate between neighbors, between business owners, et cetera. There are a few areas in the city, and Scott can kind of go to that slide. This is the state law. And as you look through this, this basically says that you can't take snow and deposit it across the roadway, or basically put snow where it's going to cause a vision obstruction to motorists that are traveling that roadway. This is kind of an overall state law that we deal with. We can go to our city ordinance, which basically states that you can't take snow from your property and put it on somebody else's property, or take it out of your driveway and move it a half a block down. Basically, you can take the snow out of your driveway, and you can put it in the city right away, which is basically the area between the sidewalk and the street, and you can do that on each side of your driveway, within 12 inches of that area. Okay? Or, I'm sorry, not 12 inches, it would be two feet, I believe. So, where we run into problems is when we receive a significant amount of snowfall, and people are running out of areas to store that snow, they start looking for different areas to store it, and sometimes that creates a conflict with their neighbors. And if that occurs, we usually are called to intervene, or try to mediate that situation. So those are kind of the enforcement aspects of the snow that we deal with. We are also charged with enforcing the winter parking ban. And that begins November 1st, and continues through April 1st. And basically, that states that you can't park your car on the street between the hours of 1:00 and 6:00. This kind of coincides with Scott and his department, in the fact that this is an optimal time for his crews on midnights to clear the streets when we get a significant amount of snowfall. As most of you know, when we get a storm, it's very unpredictable when that storm will hit us. Sometimes it hits us during the peak of rush hour, or early in the morning, or late at night. We don't have any control over that. So, I think that, you may, as commissioners, get some feedback regarding plowing and the clearing of streets, based on the timing of the storms. And, you know, during the midday periods, it's not the optimal time to clear those streets. That's why we have the winter parking ban. So, the cars are not allowed to park on the street, and that allows the Public Works crews to really get a good cleaning of those streets. That's not to say that they're not out there midday, or during rush hour, clearing those streets, but the optimal time is during that parking ban period. And that way, they have an unobstructed view of that roadway, all the roadways where parking's allowed. And that's one of the biggest issues we face at the Police Department, is winter parking ban. We do a lot to educate the public on it, as far as PSAs, public service announcements, we work with NME Public Safety, as far as orientations to let their students know, we put it on our Facebook page, we put it in, on the TV channel, to try to educate people. We cannot go out and post a sign, you know, every winter, on every, you know, every two or three feet on a street, saying that the winter parking ban's in effect. And most people that live in our community are well aware of the winter parking ban, and if they do have visitors from out of the area, we do take that into consideration if they receive a ticket. So there's just a lot of different factors that play a role in that, in that winter parking ban, but it is, it is an effective tool that we use to make sure that we can continue to clear our streets. Some of these, according to city ordinance, some of these snow removal districts, as you can see on here, these are areas that the property owners are basically responsible for clearing those streets. A lot of those fall within Mona's jurisdiction, as far as the DDA, and some of her crews do play a role in that removal, and cleaning up of those areas. And those are basically the two sections of the city ordinance that we deal with. Like I said, the first one, which is the snow removal just for a regular residence, and then obviously the snow removal in the districts that they're designated. And a lot of that also is a partnership between Public Works and the DDA, and us working with Public Works advising where we have problems. So, that's our role, kind of in a nutshell, as far as the Police Department goes. You know, failure to clear, we don't really run into a lot of those issues in that Downtown Development District. A lot of the business owners and the people in the DDA work to try to keep that specific area clear and open, especially with the Third Street now that it's been added to the DDA. So, I think that's kind of our, in a nutshell, what our role is at the Police Department, as far as the enforcement, and then also working as a point of contact for Public Works when we are out on the road after hours for them. And we do, you know, in this, in this winter, and the conditions that we've had this year, we also receive calls, not maybe related to parking enforcement issues, but relating to a water main break. We get a lot of calls where all of a sudden, you know, a resident will be driving by, and they'll see a large amount of water coming out of the front of a residence. We'll send a car by, and obviously, it's a water main break, it's pretty serious. We'll get ahold of the on-duty supervisor at Public Works, and then once again, he will summon the appropriate people to deal with that situation, and then they'll dispatch them to that location to deal with it. If it's something that can deal, can wait till the next day, they'll let us know. Okay, we'll let the crew know at 6:30 in the morning that they can get on, and get out there and deal with it right away. So, there are other aspects that we deal with, as far as phone calls, and issues regarding snow, that we deal with after hours. So, with that, I'll kind of pass it on to Scott, and he can kind of let you know what his role as VPW is.
Thank you, Blake. The goal of the Public Works Department is, when snow starts falling, to return the streets to a safe and drivable condition as soon as possible, within the limitations of equipment and our resources. You know, that really doesn't mean you're going to have dry pavement conditions necessarily right away, like you have in the summertime, but we want to get them safe and drivable as soon as we can. As we go on here, we'll look a little bit at the order at which streets and that are And generally, I think we do a fair job at that, as long as we stay flexible with our Some of the responsibilities, everything within the city limit doesn't fall on the US 41 and M553, basically from where Division Street comes in, going to the south, those are maintained by MDOT, or MDOT Responsibility. Generally, the Marquette County Road Commission is the contractor for MDOT in this neck of the woods. So they've contracted all their services out to the Road Commission. The neighboring townships have also contracted out with the County Road Commissions, okay? So we don't plow outside the city limits. And we do have a portion of the contract. It is a state route from the US 41 bypass, down to where Division Street comes in. And we do have a contract in which we maintain that for the state of Michigan. Additionally, if you look at ways, some of the responsibilities are split up. We really look at trying to provide safe winter travel for the 90 miles of roads that we maintain within the city of Marquette. Additionally, we maintain roughly 20 miles of sidewalk for safe routes to school, and additionally, that's also being a walkable community provided for safe routes into our business district as well. Downtown Development Authority, additionally, they help assist, basically, they're the ones clearing the sidewalks within the DDA limits. You know, your major streets for that are Third Street, Front Street, Washington Street, and they do branch out a little bit from that. But by ordinance, in those, in that district, the property owners are the responsible party for clearing sidewalks. Expectations, I think it's important, you know, that we, we let you know what you should expect, and certainly, if you don't feel that we're providing that, please give us a call. But, basically, we prioritize streets within the city of Marquette, so that we are starting snow removal with the streets that are moving the most traffic. Okay? So, for example, if you live on a cul-de-sac that maybe only sees 10 or 12 cars a day, that's going to be given a different priority level than something like Washington Street that sees thousands of cars a day. Ideally, you know, as the storm moves on, we'll be maintaining close to your home, but you may have, you know, within two or three blocks where you're driving on a road that hasn't been plowed for maybe a few hours. You know, if there's a couple of inches of snow on the road, I mean, that's what you might expect as you're leaving your house, until you get to one of the major roads that's carrying higher volumes of traffic. We like to plow all the primary snow routes, within 12 hours after the snowfall has stopped. Ideally, we're able to complete that within about eight hours. Right now, there are eight snow routes in the city of Marquette. It takes about eight hours to complete each one of those routes. Okay? And neighborhood streets, you should expect those within 24 hours, being fully completed after the snow has stopped. Often, when we get into the wintertime, we are moving into not only a day shift, but an afternoon shift, and a night shift, so that we can accommodate that. One of the reasons, as you notice, as I go down here, cul-de-sacs and dead ends are a little bit longer yet. We really try not to address those during the nighttime hours unless we really have to. We're all clearing those types of roads with front-end loaders, backup alarms on front-end loaders, if you're going back and forth 50 times in 10 minutes in your cul-de-sac, that's going to be very disruptive, so we're trying not to be disruptive as we're clearing those types of streets. Additionally, you know, as I mentioned, front-end loaders, but depending on how the cul-de-sacs were designed, we have a limited number of plows that can even make it through a cul-de-sac. We do have one plow truck that has all-wheel steer, that allows us to get through those tighter cul-de-sacs, but they do present problems for a lot of our conventional plowing As I mentioned, there's eight routes. This is available online. It's a color-coded map of all the routes. Within those routes, like I mentioned, you've got major streets and local streets, and then kind of at the bottom of that, you've got your dead ends and your cul-de-sac type streets. Additionally, we usually have a scraper, sander-type truck that's out there, and primarily, what they're doing is, as they're going around, we've got a lot of hills as we come off of Washington Street, so they'll hit those a lot. They focus on school routes, especially in the morning, to make sure that those are ready for the kids coming to school, and the buses and the parents bringing the kids to school. And then, again, as I said, the front-end loaders and that will come in and clear up cul-de-sacs later on. Sidewalks, snow removal, there's 67 miles roughly of sidewalk in the city of Marquette. We're able to clear about 20 miles of sidewalk, and again, that is designed so that it can be accommodated in an eight-hour shift. Most of our stuff is designed around an eight-hour shift, so we make sure that we can get all the way through the route during the day. These routes were originally created back when we actually had all the elementary schools. So, you know, some people may say, "Well, you've still left the stuff around Parkview, you've still left stuff over on the east side of town." And what we try to accomplish is, like I said, not only for schoolkids walking in, but also for people walking to work, maybe it's the University of the Hospital, businesses along Third Street, or Washington Street. And really, the idea is that they're kind of on a grid system, so if, really, if you look, you should only have to go a couple of blocks before you can pick up a sidewalk that is plowed in the city of Marquette. Here is another map that's available online. The blue, as you can see, kind of in the middle there, that is now the section that's all maintained by the DDA. The red section is what we maintain as a city. The green, the light green section on there, that is the sidewalk located around Northern's Campus. And the yellow that is on there, that is the section of the multi-use path, or commonly referred to as the bike path, that we maintain. And we maintain about 90% of it, we maintain about 16 out of the 18 miles of the bike path. Even through the wintertime, that is still one of our number-one assets for people getting out and getting moving in the community. Another common question we get is, how do you decide snowbank removal? Usually, as we get somewhere between Thanksgiving and the Christmas season, we're getting to the point where typically, you're getting banks that are a couple feet tall in the business district. So generally, right now, we like to get out and start doing some of the removal in the business district before the holiday season. Sometimes we get all the way through before, sometimes we don't, I mean, we have had a few years where we just haven't had that much snow at Christmas time. But generally, we are out, one removal before, a second one probably around the time leading up to the UP 200, is generally when it occurs. And then, some routes, we have gotten out a third time in the business district. If you remember back to the previous slide, where we had the sidewalk routes, because we're clearing that snow off the sidewalks, those snowbanks tend to get a lot higher quicker. So that's really the second area that we go to, our routes, along the sidewalk routes, where we start clearing snow. And along with that grouping, we do try to clear out around the public schools, the areas that are going to have a lot of traffic, kids coming, a lot of them you can drop off on-site, but I notice, my parents live towards Sandy Knoll School there, and you still notice people parking, you know, block, block, and halfway, and then locking their kids in. So we try to go out a little bit from the schools. What our staffing levels look like through this process, currently, we have six supervisors and 41 operators, and four of those operators are on the afternoon shift, so that's our typical operation throughout most of the year. As we move into the winter season, we'll start moving some of those operators to a night shift, and usually, we start moving them right after Thanksgiving. That seems to be when we start getting snowfall at a regular interval. So, we move a limited number of them during that time, and then as we start removing snowbanks, as Blake said, that's an operation that's best done at night, so we're not fighting traffic. You know, we don't have to deal with a lot of people coming in and out of driveways, having to get to and from their house. It's a much safer operation, not only for our department, but for the public doing it at night. So we start moving tonight, by midwinter, we've taken one of the supervisors and 10 of the operators, and moved them to nights. Their primary function while on nights is, they're either plowing snow, or they're removing snow. As we move to the late winter now, we start backing off, and this has been a very, very unique winter. We've had average to maybe what you might even consider above-average snowfall, if you're comparing it to the past five years. So we've had a lot of snowfall, and we've had a winter that's, really hasn't been rivaled since 1993, 94, for the cold. So this year, we've brought people back on to days, as we've been dealing with a lot of frozen water services, a lot of frozen sewer services, and so we've tried to get those people back. So we are back down to... So we are back down to six on our night shift right now, and we'll probably be decreasing that shortly. One of the functions they perform later in the year, and the reason, even as the snow is starting to go, after the snow is all gone, you'll notice all the sand and the product that we put down for traction in the winter time is still out there. So a big portion of what they do on nights is, especially in the business districts and that, they get that type of work done where they they don't have parked cars to deal with and that type of stuff. Snowfighting equipment, really, I put this up here just to kind of give you a flavor for just how much equipment there is out there that goes into the snowfighting, and I also included the replacement cost off to the end, so you can see or get an idea of what type of value each one of those pieces of equipment holds. I won't go through each one. I'll only note again that there's eight frontline plow trucks. There's the frontline sander truck. We have two pieces of equipment, the municipal tractors for clearing sidewalks. We do still have one plow that we maintain as a backup. Winters are very harsh on the plowing equipment. Generally, the plowing equipment's not down for very long, but it is common that the, essentially, the backup plow is generally in service. The rest of our equipment, you can see for the, not only for facilities and for our snow removal operation, we deal with a lot of front-end loaders, a lot of haul trucks, and commonly referred to as the voles. Those are the huge snow throwers that are used for cutting the banks, and those are actually individual contained units, but they are carried around on the front of a front-end loader. And then, at the bottom, we've we've got some equipment that we maintain the outdoor ice rinks with. So how do we pay for all that? What's that look like? This is basically, it's broken down into the three categories, what we're spending on an annual basis for those three types of maintenance. As you can see, we're at about a million, 1,150,000 for the streets, about 50,000 a year for sidewalks, and about 56,000 a year for the bike path maintenance. I would point out, this is only the winter maintenance end of things, so this includes all your salt and sand and that type of stuff, but it's mainly plowing and snow removal. So we're at about 1.25 million. We've got an equal amount that's put into maintenance for the other six months of the year as well. And I would just point out that the end of that, we've got a little bit of a unique situation right now that we have a 15-month budget, but I would point out, those aren't inflated or changed for the 15-month budget. Those are still 12-month budget numbers. Just a few helpful hints. Certainly, if you don't need to park in the street, when we are out plowing during a storm, it is helpful if you are able to park in your driveway, and it helps us for getting the snow plowed. Don't plow your snow, as Blake mentioned, across the street, or unnecessarily put it in the street. I think it's 30 inches, you can put it out from the curb line or the edge of the bank as you're clearing them out to your driveway. But, you know, there again, we all know where that ends up as the plow comes by again. One area where we always look for for help, we do send a crew out to clear fire hydrants, but through the years, we've had to adopt a hydrant program in the neighborhoods. We've got a few people that are still doing that, where they shovel out around their hydrant, but I think they're they're kind of a dying breed, if you will, and, you know, certainly, we're always looking for help in that that area. Utilize your yard space for snow storage as much as you can, and as you're as you're clearing your driveway, you know, basically, if you put it to the right of your driveway when the plow comes by, it's just going to plow right back in, so probably the best place to put it is to the left of your driveway. Just a few things to be aware of when you're driving around plows. I think you've probably all seen the ad that the County Road Commission does, but certainly, you're putting yourself in danger by driving too close to a plow where they can't see you. Additionally, if you're driving near a combination rig that does have the sander on the back, as that comes off the spinner, it does come off the back of the truck a little bit, so you have to be aware of that. And basically, the biggest thing for the winter driving, in my opinion, if it takes you 10 minutes to get there in the summertime and you've got great roads, I guarantee it's going to take you a little bit longer to get there in the winter time, so plan ahead. And that's mainly what I've got for the public works, so I'm going to turn it over to Dennis Stackowitz from Community Development.
Thank you, Scott. I can take care of that, Blake. I'm going to kind of whiz through this thing. I'm going to talk a little bit today about community consensus building and how we got to the point where it was decided that certain amount of sidewalks are going to be cleared and percentage of roads are going to be cleared, and how they come up with some of their strategies. So we have various community planning documents that I'm going to talk about today. The big one is the Community Master Plan. We'll talk a little bit about the chapters that deal with the public participation, walkability, traffic, and we actually have a chapter in our master plan that deals with winter city. Most recently, we went through an exercise for the Third Street Corridor that brought awareness to us, not only in dealing with sidewalks and alternative forms of transportation, but also universal design, and how we try to make a community accessible for even persons with disabilities in the winter time. The Marquette Mobility Management Strategy, which was a project that we went, was financed through Smart Growth America that looks at transit also in the winter time. And then, a couple of other resources I just want to briefly touch on regarding the Winter Cities Institute and a project that we are involved with. So we go back to our Community Master Plan, and it's being updated now. We hope to have something in the spring for the community to take a look at based upon recent input, but what we're dealing with now is a vision that says, "We want to be the premier livable, walkable winter city in North America." Okay? We want to embrace winter. We want to be able to get around in winter, and we also want to be able to be not mobility-challenged in the winter. There are seven distinct goals in the master plan, and one of them was to make Marquette a walkable community. So it was clearly part of the target priorities for the community to do this. I'm just going to go through these a little quickly, and I'd make a note that we plan on having this presentation up on the website tomorrow, so you can go through and identify all of these goals. I just want to cut and paste and make them aware, but a lot of things that came up during the master plan process, when we talk about public access recreational opportunities, we mention all-season. We want all-season public access. We want to be a year-round community. We want to be a winter city. We want to support those type of activities. We had, during the public participation, we talked about neighborhoods and neighborhood level planning, and, you know, we talked about the possibility of neighborhoods within themselves possibly having the own control of their destiny in terms of walkability and consortiums that they may identify for that. And a big thing that came up was, "We would like to have non-motorized connections within each neighborhood that gets us to public facilities," and that ties into the priorities of public works and how they choose those school plow routes, and also getting you to the various commerce and retail areas of the city. Historic and diverse 247 downtown, again, all-seasons. It pops up. It was a recurring theme in the master plan. We want to be able to be that all-season destination. We want to embrace winter. And then, we get to the walkable community, and this is a pretty important statement, and this one was, you know, came from the community, and it basically, you take these things and you form kind of mission statements on it, but it spoke about a balance between quality of life in a winter city and snow removal. And that's really kind of what we're talking about here this evening, is trying to manage the expectations and the challenges that we may deal with. We talked about it in the transportation chapter. One of the things that actually has been implemented in a number of street reconstruction projects is coming up with a, what we like to call is the the Marquette Standard for Streets. And in essence, what we've done is we've taken some of the streets and narrowed them a bit, creating much more of, a technical term of what we call a parkway or a terrace area, which provides for more snow storage from the sidewalk and the street, and kind of reduces the burden so that it can bring those banks down a little bit and make it less work for the crews to go out there and do that. And it also becomes a quality-of-life issue because it's a traffic-calming opportunity, although I think there's probably room for debate as to the narrowness of those in very severe winters such as we're experiencing right now. They might seem to be a little bit, a little bit of a hassle. Another statement about snow removal and how it should define where we're at or not define. This was pretty interesting that came up, is that snow removal is a blessing and a curse when we're really good at it, and I will say our Public Works Department is, having, being a guy that's a real, has to be by function of owning a lot of dogs, right? I'm the snowplow where I live at, so I start my truck in the morning, plow down to the county road and plow to the end, take my kids to daycare and come back, and then my wife can go to work. But you don't have that here in the city because you have a wonderful operation, so you're blessed. But the curse becomes on the Public Works Department because the expectations have just been extremely set to a very, very high standard where there's a lot of room for little room for error for them. But we talked about some ideas with the community about how we could possibly modify the snow storage and removal. Are there street dimensions that could be looked at that could become the Marquette Standard? Is there new equipment that could be possibly looked at that would be more flexible with that? There's an associated cost. And then, we also talked about traffic management, roundabouts and on-street parking, and a lot of healthy debate that took part, occurred during that process. We're probably one of the very few master plans in North America that actually has a chapter on winter cities. I saw Pat Coleman in the room before. He's been pretty instrumental in helping us along the way. He's a past president of, or current president of, Winter Cities Institute. But that chapter actually deals with recommendations for site design, road design, pedestrian circulation, snow management, even as far as how you can plant vegetation to block the wind and make things more comfortable for the pedestrian. Even goes into aesthetics a little bit because, believe it or not, the color of a building can actually alter your mood in the winter time. And I know nobody in this room has ever suffered from seasonal affective disorder. I mean, we're all just happy all the time, and we love this white-gray color, and it's just great, right? So anyhow, there's a lot of information in the master plan. I just wanted to give you a brief overview. I encourage you to take a look at it, particularly the winter city aspect, and understand that it was a consensus-building effort amongst the community that we use to help prioritize the maintenance tasks that they look at. We most recently were lucky to receive some grant funding and did a plan for the Third Street Corridor, and it was kind of like the welcoming project for Third Street into the downtown area. And we had some great consultant work that was done on that, and one of the key components to this plan was that we actually looked at what we call active transportation, and that is things other than cars. Cars are part of it, but how do bicyclists, pedestrians, and transit fit into that? I've mentioned tactical urbanism on here, but that's basically just how you put paint on the streets and things to accommodate some test facilities, but it's pretty interesting. But it also created some awareness for us that generally, when we reconstruct sidewalks through our sidewalk maintenance program where we do our capital improvements planning, we build things to an ADA standard. It helped us create awareness that there's something out there besides ADA that's called universal design, and that, in a nutshell, is more or less non-government mandated common sense that helps persons with disabilities. This is the best way that I can explain it. And it, whether it, it helps us, the Marquette Access Group helped us gain a much better understanding of the needs of the individual users with disabilities, particularly in the winter time. And most certainly, this this picture here doesn't exemplify it because it's somebody on a bike, but I know there's been times you could go through town and depending on the status of the street or where we're at, you could see somebody in a motorized wheelchair out in the street, which is never a good situation. So those are some things that we need to think about as well. We did, we participated in a mobility management strategy. Our planner, Dave Stensis, was able to coordinate some efforts with a number of partners that looked at transit, working with Mark Tran, primarily from a standpoint of the Third Street Corridor and looking at possibility of a downtown loop route and the many, many moving parts that would go into those strategies. And one of the targeted things that came up in the strategy was snow management and sidewalks and curbs. Of course, if you're going to have pedestrians using a transit system, you have to look at the system as a whole. They have to be able to get to the bus stop and so on and so forth. Just a couple of plugs here. We do, we are members of the Winter Cities Institute. This was formed in 2008 by Pat Coleman, and it builds off the Formable Livable Winter Cities Association, of which we have been members of since the late 1990s. It's really a networking group. It's comprised of international members, so there are members from Canada, there are members from Northern Europe that participate, as well as members from winter cities in the United States, and we share information and plans and best practices with one another as well. And we participated in a case study on effective practices for snow removal and complete streets, and we were one of five communities that participated in it. This is kind of a selfish plug. I, you know, I think it was a pretty good project, and it actually speaks very well to Marquette about some of our practices, and that is also available on our website via a link. So that was my five-minute or less overview. I told, I said I would keep it short. I'm known to talk for a long time. I just want to give people an idea that there is some method to the madness of how we do, how Scott and his crew programs their activities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mona to talk about the DDA, which now includes Third Street.
It does. Thank you, Dennis. I just want to talk a little bit about the DDA, what our roles are, how we integrate into what the city does, not only with summer maintenance, but this is winter maintenance. And so, a lot of what I'm going to say is going to probably reiterate what Dennis said and what Scott said. Okay, DDA vision statement mirrors, basically, the city's vision statement in that to secure Marquette's downtown as the center of a premier, livable, walkable winter city that provides its residents with a sense of place. Why is snow management in the downtown district important? Well, first of all, maintaining a walkable, accessible downtown and community is part of the Community Master Plan, the Corridor Plan, the Marquette Mobility Plan, Complete Streets, and it also provides ADA compliance. Also, maintaining a positive image of downtown is fundamental to the economic health of the downtown and the city. It also is important to the city's quality of life. The health of the downtown is reflective of the health of the city and the region, and I think you all know that. If you go into an area where a downtown is deteriorating, you feel like the area also has no health to it. It's not economically viable. It's not economically viable. It does represent the largest concentration of business, and it's the second-largest concentration of employees in the city. Now with Third Street employees, it may actually be the largest concentration downtown. The historic downtown district has about 2,200 people working in the district. With Third Street, we probably have another 800. So, it is a large concentration, it's very dense, and it's also a critical component to retaining and attracting job-producing businesses. So businesses want to go to a place that they know that the community cares about, that looks like it is economically strong. So then, the snow removal district, I really won't go over this in detail because Link went over it, but that basically is the downtown district. And employee, or property owners and businesses are required to clean, clear the sidewalks from snow directly in front of their properties. What we found out with the DDA was that businesses, property owners would clear the property in front of their building, and then we would have these glaciers between properties sometimes if there was a vacant building or if there was a driveway. So, what happened then is the DDA board worked with the city commission. The city was very interested in seeing more detailed maintenance downtown. They knew that the city didn't have the resources to do them. So in 1999, we did enter into an agreement with the city, which authorized us to maintain the sidewalks in the parking lots in the city. We do provide the snow plowing of all the districts, of all the sidewalks. We started Third Street this year. Third Street came into the, to the district in September of 2011, so it was 2011, 2012. So, we have started that, and we, I'll show you in a little bit the equipment we used. We just purchased another piece of equipment. Now we do have usually two little plows out on the sidewalks to keep Third Street clear. Third Street has a little bit of a challenge because there are so many curb cuts and so many driveways that are adjacent to the sidewalks. So, you know, my guys will go through and they'll clean the sidewalks on Third Street, and then someone will clean their driveway or their curb cut right in front of the sidewalk. So it's a little bit different because the cars are actually driving kind of over the sidewalk area. The city does provide the snow plowing for all public streets, and they also provide hauling services from the downtown district of the snowbanks, and they do that twice a year. Scott has already addressed that. Any additional, we have an agreement that it's $16,000 a time. So it's fairly expensive to have the, have the banks removed. And then again, just to remind our property owners, we do that a couple of times in the winter, is you still do have a responsibility to clean in front of your property even though we are coming through and doing it for the entire district. This is, you've already seen this, the blue is our sidewalk responsibilities. It's 6.6 miles of sidewalk, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it is for us. We have one full-time maintenance coordinator and five part-time that each of those work probably about 20 hours a week. And we have, this is the equipment we have. We do have a holder tractor that the city helped us finance back in 1999. It's getting old, and so we're going to have to come up with the resources to replace it. We're putting a lot of money into keeping it on the road. And then we also have a, we have actually two of these small Kubota tractors now. We use, we figure about 920 hours per winter season. And we have tried something new this year, and I think it's working way better even with the winter that we've had. Originally, with, through, through the winter cities, they recommended that you use a brush to pack the snow down, and we've been doing that for a lot of years, and I just wasn't satisfied. So what we've done this year is we've gone to plowing and scraping the sidewalks pretty much down to their surface, and it's working really well. If we get a big snow, we'll take the holder tractor out with the blower and follow it with another employee in the small tractor behind to actually take the sidewalks down to the finish because it also, in the long run, helps us. Because my maintenance staff would spend hours and hours out scraping. Once the snow is packed, and then as the ice forms, they would have to actually go out with icebreakers manually and do that. By clearing them down to the surface, it's really reduced a lot of that. So we also do a lot of hand shoveling, sanding and scraping. We have five or six pedestrian walkways in the city or in the downtown. So you'll see, I know you'll see our staff out with shovels and with buckets with sand. We also maintain all of the public parking lots that are in the district. We contract with that, a $31,000 a year contract to plow and haul the snow. If more than two inches of snow falls at night, or by 5:00 AM, it's a responsibility of our contractor to go out, get those parking lots cleaned so that when the employees come downtown, they have clean and clear parking lots. The other part of that is the snowbank removal. We've kind of talked about that. That's always an issue. That is the most common complaint that I get daily from businesses and from residents and shoppers that are coming downtown, that not only is it hard to get to the shops and the businesses, but it's hard to get out of their cars when they park on the street. And it also narrows up the travel lanes, so it causes a safety hazard as far as vehicular safety. And then that's a little bit of what we use to help maintain the winter snow. We get parking rental revenue of about $91,000. Downtown employees buy a quarterly parking permit, allows them to park all day in the lots. We get parking revenue, parking meter revenue of about $35,000. We have a two-mill tax on downtown properties and a two-mill tax on Third Street properties, and actually those figures are reversed. Third Street brings in a little bit over $17,000. Downtown properties bring in about $23,000. And snow maintenance is about 42% of our total maintenance budget. And then we also do have the tax increment financing. That's not normally used for maintenance, that's used for capital projects, bond repayment and some other non-maintenance activities, but it does end up supplementing a lot of the parking costs. And a lot of our maintenance costs, we just have to be careful that those TIF funds are used in the TIF district. And that is everything I have. So I'm going to turn this back over to Dennis.
Yep.
And he'll take your questions.
Now I play the role of facilitator. Okay, so, an hour. Is everybody still with us? It was a long presentation, but hopefully you have better understanding of some of the challenges that we have. I'm going to entertain some questions, and we're going to talk a little bit about the next steps and where we go from here. We'd like to have the forum. We'd like to get some feedback from the community. There may be some questions that we cannot answer particularly tonight that might need to be looked at on the next step of the process, which actually comes when we gather all of this information, do an analysis and then work with the commissioners once we get into the strategic planning process so that they can make sure that funds are appropriately budgeted to match the desires of the community. So, with that, I'm going to present a little example. As I said, I was going to do this today. Some of the things that we're looking at or what we hear is, when we originally got together with this snow summit, we all talked about what are the targets that we're going to look at, okay? Because we all get phone calls, we all, as well as commissioners, get phone calls. And we tried to identify within each one of our departments what the number one problem is that may be perceived as a challenge or a problem in the community and how we would propose to address it. So I'm going to start out with one that comes in the planning department all the time. "We're supposed to be a walkable community, but the city doesn't maintain the sidewalks in my neighborhood." It's a pretty legitimate concern, right? Especially for someone living on that block. But we've described that we have a program in place with the budget allocated that we can get you to certain major routes, and we tried to have it set up within a couple blocks of how you could access a maintained sidewalk from the city. Okay, and what's the solution for that? Well, I think there's a couple of solutions that would need to be looked at as we go through strategic planning. The first solution is buy some equipment, and you make sure that there's appropriate personnel, and you put it into the budget to have that done on every city street, if that's what the community so desires that they want to do that. Or you have the alternative that you could do it through some type of legislation or ordinance, or similar to the downtown districts, you would have an ordinance that say within 48 or 36, 48 hours, it would be the property owner's responsibility to clear the sidewalk. So, okay, there's my issue with a possible solution. Those are kind of the things that we're going to look for to kind of come out of this meeting. Do you think we're doing a good job? Are there things that the city can improve on from your scope of what matters to you and your world and the community? What would you like to see and so on? You have a set of good ears here that'll be working on it later on as we get into the strategic planning process. Okay, so who's first? Sir?
I'm Tom Hargensinger. I've lived in the city of Marquette since 1967. My parents moved up here from Maine to Wisconsin. I lived in Marquette for, until 1979, and then I went to Chocolate Township. 2010, I came back to city of Marquette and have been living in city of Marquette. I have been around the public works department since, Scott may remember his name, Reuben Kep. Reuben was an operator back in the 60s and 70s, and he'd do the blow drivers, and he was a friend of mine, dad. But I think overall, city of Marquette's done excellent job of plowing since 1967. I think they've been very aggressive in their street maintenance and refurbishing. Now you've guys gone through your streets, your sewer systems, knew everything else, so all those utilities are in good shape for the next 50 years since I've been around since 67. And I think you've been very progressive in that. It shows that you, you may have freeze-ups right now, but you could have had a lot more like the other cities who have been progressive as Marquette. I think it's a great job you guys are doing. So, yeah, it's just great. One comment too is the fire hydrants that Scott brought up. I think that would be a good program to maybe try to get out as a flagship to have the neighborhood person, or you don't have to designate, say, "I'm going to go do this fire hydrant," but maybe get the program outstarted again. Because actually, I saw a little blip on somebody else doing it from their city, so I went to my nearest fire hydrant. So if you just put maybe a little P8 on that A, fire hydrant, awareness A, tell me your nearest sidewalk, the nearest fire hydrant. Never know what might happen. Because ultimately, I want it cleared just in case I have something disaster. Or I want you guys to be able to shut off the water with a flood, with the water, broken water line. So it all helps out, I think. So I think you guys are doing a great job. So, that's basically it.
Thank you, that's a good start. At least from our perspective. I'm sure there's more.
One other comment, I was walking down Washington Street today, and the sidewalk issues that you're having with the angles and adaptable weather conditions, we do have to watch out for that because even for me, young, middle-aged, the sidewalks have a slant to it, so you're walking sort of sideways. So, I know it's a hard combination, I was in the construction industry, so it's a hard fine line of not getting ice, the black ice. So it's a hard issue, but it's good luck in that.
Thank you. I know there are way more opinionated people in this crowd. Somebody's got, there's got to be more opinions. We're doing great. Everything's status quo. We're going to keep doing it that way? There we go.
My name's Laura Petrie. I live in the city on East K. I am your pedestrian. I walk from south all the way south Marquette, maybe as far as the women's center, a little farther, to as far as you can go north. And I have to say, over the years, they have really improved the sidewalks. I remember when the tracks would be just frozen bumps on the sidewalk, and you'd be walking really shaky. They're not like that anymore. And in the downtown area that you go all the way down, I really notice the improvement. It helps. And I don't have any problem getting to south Marquette, but I do have a problem getting to north Marquette. Right after Fourth Street would be my only street that I can walk going north. And once I get after Wright Street, there is nothing plowed, and it is very difficult to walk north of Wright Street. It just, there's no one that lives on the street, of course, so nothing shoveled. And it really, that's where the ballpark is, but there's a lot of housing, there's a lot of activity north of Wright Street. And so that's probably the only area that I can see, that little strip up there that I would love, because it's an area that I'm not comfortable walking in the street to get to where I need to go to. Like, to go downtown, even though Front Street is well-done, a lot of times I'll walk down High Street. It's a low-traffic area, so I can just walk in the street. I can't do that on Front Street. It's too much activity. So that would be my only comment, but otherwise, kudos to all of you. It's really has been, as long as this year has been, it's been an easy year to walk in the snow. So, thank you.
What's the school, Dennis?
Hi. I don't know if I have a lot to say. John Krokowski, I am a resident of the city of Marquette, and I'm also the director of auxiliary services for Marquette area public schools. Part of my job is I handle, kind of two-pronged here. I handle the buses, which obviously use Marquette area, Marquette roads, and I'm also in charge of hiring all of our contractors for snow removal. And I know what a daunting process that is to not only get them online, but then to monitor the success or failure of them in terms of getting snow removed. Bottom line is, is I'm, I'm very happy with the job that Marquette does in terms of maintaining the city roads and look forward to the continued success on the part of the city to get those done. If there's a recommendation, it's, if at all you can ever build it into the budget to do more sidewalks, that would be awesome because that's probably the number one complaint I get, is that I'll get a call from a standing old parent that lives with, you know, a couple blocks of the city, but they can't. They live on a street that's not plowed, so therefore, how can we expect those kids to walk to work and why won't, or walk to school and why won't we provide the bus? So that's probably the biggest, biggest thing that I have, is that if you ever can build it into the budget to do more sidewalks, that's an awesome thing. But other than that, I think you do a great job. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Jim? And you?
Well, I don't, I don't do that.
I don't know that, I haven't commented on the city hall, we think a lot of the same issues that you have, we have. How do you prioritize streets? How do you prioritize parking lots above? How do you balance that with sidewalk clearing? How do you maintain equipment? How do you afford it? How do you prioritize vehicles? We have all the same. We don't do it on a scale that you guys do, but the issues are the same. One of the complaints that we've had quite a bit this year is our expectation on how we maintain our sidewalks. And I heard Mona talk about this year that they've gone away from brushing and kind of attack blocks to having very clear and bare sidewalks. That's kind of the standard that we work for. We don't always get it, and when we don't, we tear them off. There is the expectation that no matter what the conditions are, we don't have bare concrete blocks.
One of the things that is commonly talked about, it's something that Mona brought up to a little bit, is bank removal. Through some of these other planning efforts and some of the snow conferences, you know, there's a lot of different things that are done out there. You know, we're not unique in that we have to deal with snow. We're a little bit special with the amount of snow we deal. We're a little bit special with the amount of snow we deal with, but it's, it's not a, a problem that's unique to Marquette. So, bank removal is, is probably the number-one thing we get calls on. Some of the ideas or considerations that are out there, we've seen some communities that take all their snow and simply every so often, they plow basically the opposite direction and they plow the entire bank out in the middle of the street and then it's collected. We do that now a little bit when we, when we do our snowbank cuts or removals. It's, it's a, a little bit different as they're doing it. They're doing it almost on a, by the snowfall basis as opposed to two, maybe three times a winter. You know, so that is a, a consideration in dealing with, with that. Certainly, it could be done more often. Some of the things we've talked about with the DDA is maybe partnering a little bit different on how we do that. You know, maybe they can get it to a point where as they're clearing, they're actually putting it in the parking lanes and then we're, we're collecting it. Just the nature of the beast with that, it does, you know, present some logistic problems. The DDA, as we had talked earlier, is, has changed quite a bit in the last twenty to thirty years. I think you're seeing kind of a revival with restaurant and bar-type businesses within that district that are, are open later at night. So, that, that kind of closes your window and on the other side of that, you've got your regular daytime businesses. So, that is a challenge. It's not one that's something you can't overcome, I don't think, but certainly that is a, a challenge. You know, along with those lines, a conversation at a couple of different times with John is, you know, how do we tie in the, the bank clearing with the sidewalk removal? And we've got many areas where we've got bus stops around town. Very interesting, if you ever have the opportunity to see all the maps that John has with all the bus routes on it and the number of stops, will make your head spin when you're doing that for basically, what, three different age groups? You know, so how do we incorporate maybe some of that in as we go through the planning efforts? I, you know, you can come up with many different solutions and, and many of these solutions really, you know, take into account how you're planning as you're designing streets in the first place, I think. You know, one of, one of the things that, you know, it's not necessarily a negative because I, I think it makes us unique, but we're not a hundred percent consistent with how we've done things through the years from one area to the next. So, I think what you find is some of these things might work really good in a neighborhood and not so good in another neighborhood. Can we make ourselves flexible enough so that we can accommodate all those different things? You know, that's a tough thing to go through, but, you know, that's part of what we'd like to do throughout this process is maybe kind of tease out some of those ideas and, and one of the things that I've been working on putting together and a, a large part of what that presentation was based on, was trying to put out a, together a document that, you know, go through bill and, you know, maybe eventually the, the, it becomes an adopted plan so everybody knows what the expectations are for snow removal services.
As far as the police department, one of our biggest issues that we face probably would be associated with the parking ban. You know, without being able to post the signs on, on every street educating the public on it, we receive a lot of, we issue a lot of citations regarding the winter parking ban and we deal with a lot of the aftermath of those citations at our police department. That would probably be the biggest issue we, we face. And we've talked about this in, through our meetings about possible options, whether that be, we know that the, the parking ban is a necessary evil in the fact that due to our snowfall levels, we have to have a time period where our public works crews can either plow snow effectively or remove snow effectively without being interrupted by parked vehicles on the street. How we deal with that is, is an area that might be worth investigating as far as different options, whether it be divide the city into zones or, or a north or south aspect. You know, north, you can park one night, you know, opposite nights where you can park north one night and then that, the next day that is, is under a ban. Or similar to garbage nights, you know, where, you know, throughout the city, each zone, like Tuesday nights, I, I have garbage pickup on Tuesday nights, so that would allow you to park on the street similar. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of opportunities there to investigate a more, a different way to deal with that. I think you're still going to probably deal with issues regarding the, the public parking on the street after hours. I think there still will be the, the issuing of citations, probably in larger numbers at the beginning of the season versus lower numbers at the end of the season. And we deal with that with the current parking ban right now. As much education as it, we try to, to put out there to the public, we still are dealing with, at the beginning of the season, we issue a lot of citations and then as the, as the winter progresses, those citations dramatically decrease. So, that would be one of the, the major issues, I think, we at the police department deal with. Some of the other smaller aspects as far as neighborhood disputes, you know, you're throwing snow in my driveway, you know, like Scott said, you know, we get a lot of, not a lot of complaints, but we do receive a fair number of complaints of, of, you know, people saying that, you know, they're putting all their snow on the, the right side, which would allow that to be plowed into my driveway. So, basically, I'm dealing with all my neighbor's snow as we, as we go. That doesn't seem to really happen until we get to the levels that we are right now where we have a substantial amount of snow and, and prior to the snowbanks being removed, we're running out of options as far as where to place that snow. So, as we run out of those options, as far as the banks get higher and higher, and I'm sure everybody's been around the city and have seen some of the banks that get high, you know, that slowly allows the snow to creep out into the roadway. And then that slowly will affect where people can park and it kind of narrows those, those streets down. Until those curb, until those banks are cut, you know, we're dealing with those type of complaints as far as traffic flow and people stacking snow in, in other people's driveways. But a majority of what we deal with is probably associated with the parking ban, so. Thank you. As we identify these, we'll be sure that when we hit strategic planning, that we come up with a solution for you. Manna?
Well, I have to say that I deal with both of those issues on a, like on a mini-scale. Certainly, the parking ban, we get a lot of concern from particularly the restaurant and bar owners that are open late, saying that we're encouraging people to drive while intoxicated or if they've been drinking because they don't want to leave their cars on the street because they face a fine. So, that is an issue. And I think that we're, you know, looking at some different options, looking at some, some ways that we can work around that. Yep. Yeah. We're there, almost there. And then another, the other issue is with the snowbanks and a solution that we have right now as far as access is my staff will go through and cut holes throughout the banks. That makes the banks higher on each side of the holes, but it does give access. What it still doesn't do though is it, it still narrows up the parking lanes. It's still dangerous for, to get out of vehicles and it's almost impossible to get out of vehicles from the passenger side. So, the snowbanks are always an issue, you know, we get snow. I mean, we're a winter city, we get a lot of snow. We have high banks. I've talked to cities that, that they love their high banks because it makes it look like a winter city. Not so much here. We like them, we like them flat, we like them clear. So, I think that as we work with public works, continue to work with them to come up with maybe some less expensive options or some different methods for removing those banks. We'll look forward to that.
Thank you, Manna. I think that concludes the staff portion. I understand that, Don, you have some comments that you'd like to do, present?
Excuse me. I think that the public works people should start thinking snow removal, period, not removing snow from the streets to the driveways and to the snowbanks because they won't hold it. You have a contradiction. You have your sidewalk plow coming by throwing snow this way and the street plow is throwing it that way. And after they get up, not really quite high, they're battling each other. But the main problem is, is that the people who live there, we're out, we're handling all of that snow that you push off of the street. And I'm, I'm willing to do all the snow that God will throw at us, but I don't want to stop you throw at me, especially when it's so full of sand and salt. It gets very heavy. And I'm lucky enough to have a real good piece of snow removal thing. If it weren't for that, I'd move, I'd move to Harvey or someplace. Anyway, I would say use far less sand than you do now. I'm quite sure there's a liquid option for snow melting. And if there is, if, if the cost difference isn't too bad, go to it. But in the end, you have an awful lot of cleanup as a result of all the sand that you put on. It's in the storm sewers, it's on the boulevards and wherever. And so, there's a trade-off, so I guess you choose which one you want to address and how you want to address it. But in my view, you should clean the intersections with a loader. In my instance, where I live, I have a hundred and twenty-five-foot strip of land from the intersection from Magnetic up Front Street to my driveway. That's a hundred and twenty-five feet of sand and mud that you guys put up there several times a day. And I think it's not fair. And a part of that is the snow that's been out in the intersection that gets plowed, it comes from, goes from Magnetic either way, and it ends up coming uphill to me because they come the right side, of course, going south. And if you clean that part out, it would help it a lot. And the overall view is that I think you're catering far too much to automobiles as opposed to people who live in the town and live on the town quietly, just, this is my little palace. I think, I think that, that you're catering far too much to automobiles. I think it's quite obvious, certainly obvious to me, that the new front-wheel-drive automobiles and snow tires are magic in this part of the country. And I think it wouldn't be remit, or wouldn't be wrong to require snow tires. If you can't drive, stay home, or if you get in a fuss with snow, without snow tires, you get a ticket. I was out in Washington, DC at one time, years ago, in fifty-three, I think, and they had an ordinance, they had very few snowfalls, but it was known if you got stuck without chains or something to get you out of a problem, they took your, towed your car away and you had to pay to get it back. I think I mentioned just a little while ago about the parking on alternate sides, south side, north side, east side, west side. Long ago, while on the commission, I suggested that and it was never considered that I know of, but I think it is a good thing to do. As I observe plowing, cars are allowed to start parking on the side of the street, you know, either overnight, and they don't all get a ticket, by the way. And the ones that come out early in the morning and park there, when you try to plow them, the streets that get plowed later, they're a real mess before the end of the day because there's two, three, four cars parked there. And when they do finally move, that snow doesn't get cleaned up for a long time and it's, it's out, usually out into the lane of traffic for quite a while. I think that I'd like to ask a question. That's what I thought we were starting, you started to ask where it was a question. I'll ask you a question. I understand that some of you figure, that it's a real problem for ice and water to come over Lake Fruit Drive onto the street down there north of the arena. In paper, it described as prone. I guess I'd like to know how many times a year do you clean that off the street and how, how big a problem is it really? I think you folks are set on spending some money to build a new street west of the lakeshore, tear down the, the rocks, and you're not gonna win. Mama nature's still gonna win. I think you, you best by far leave the rocks there, cut off the top a little bit, so you get a little bit of rock over there or something. I'll pick it, take my pickup and I'll get rid of it for you if it's a big problem for you, because that's all it would take really in most cases, they're small rocks. And again, I really would like to know how many times it happens a year because this is part of the basis for what you're planning on a new street. Anyway, I think that the huge expense of relocating Lakeshore and I've been, I thought I read not too long ago, where are you gonna make a, raise it eight feet or something like that? Well, that's, that's absurd. That's absurd to gain that and, and something you don't need. You'll note what you did by putting the underpass for the bike path going down Seventh Street. Look how much property you lost there with the shape, shape of the road as a result of not going at street level both ways. And I don't think it was ever gonna be a dangerous situation. The bicycles could stop at the street and then go when it's clear. They do all over, other than that. That's all I have. I would like to, oh, one thing, does the DDA receive any dollars from the budget for cleaning snow in our snow removal districts? Or Third Street is not a snow removal district as I remember. It wasn't traditionally. If it is now, that's something I've missed, but downtown was the only real snow removal district. And I think you ought to be compensated at least partly for the snow you remove for the city.
Okay, thank you, Don. We do have what you requested for Lakeshore Boulevard prepared. I'll make sure that somebody gets that to you, including the budget numbers that are expended every year on that street. I'm not quite sure about the response to the question on the DDA. I believe the question was, when was the DDA district added to the snow removal district?
No, the Third Street.
Third Street. So, when was Third Street added? You wanna take a, take a shot at that real quick? Three years ago? Recodification? Before recodification?
About eight years ago.
About eight years ago? Okay. But I think it's safe to summarize that Scott commends, he would be happy to get that information to you after, after the meeting. So, we have two things that we owe you that we'll make sure we get to you within twenty-four hours.
And a new way to handle the, so it's sand on the streets. So, it doesn't end up in driveways.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. One more and then we're going to turn it back over to the city manager.
Yes, sir. As I approach sixty, I, I agree that there may be sometimes too much sand, but sixty and falling, broken hip is not fun. So, it's a battle of removing the sand purely and having a bunch of complaint for liability because you didn't, everybody's gonna sue you now because you didn't put on enough sand. So, it's a catch-22. So, it's a fine line. And he's on a hill.
Thank you very much. Okay, city manager, this concludes the staff and public portion of the snow summit.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, staff. Really, an excellent job. Thank you to the audience. I appreciate that. Just to revisit again, this is really just the beginning of a conversation. A lot of the things that you've heard are how things are done today and how they've been done in the past. We're really focused as part of the strategic planning process in how we can do things differently and maybe even better in the future. And so, a lot of the discussion that we've had today is gonna help inform staff's views and hopefully some recommendations that as the city commission deliberates on how we could move forward better or maybe differently to help improve some of the, some of the processes and get the, get the community a little bit better, a level of service better informed. A lot of this feedback will, will play directly into that process. A lot of this feedback will, will play directly into that process. This again is just the beginning of it. Part of what we know the lowline fruit is, is just getting the information out there. I know a lot of the things from my pet peeve, from some of the discussions that staff gets. Of course, we instituted a 24-hour response and a lot of the things that happen in the winter are how come the plows always come by right before or right after I manage to plow my driveway? So depending on if the weight of the snow is so much, why did we put it all in the driveway? Or how come after somebody plowed, or somebody shoveled their driveway, the plows come by and fill it all back up again? Well, some of the things you heard today really kind of speak to that. How many people really thought hard about how many plows are out there or how many miles of road there are to plow, or how many routes there might be, or when they might be coming by? What criteria do superintendents use when the snow starts coming down? Because it's not like garbage. The weather happens when the weather happens. And so do we wait until there's two inches on the ground, an inch on the ground, three inches on the ground? Those are calls, those are the judgments of the people, the public servants here in Marquette, who serve all of us. And understanding when the likelihood is that the plows are going to come out and maybe using some modern technology to show where those plows are, if you know what route you're on, if you know what time the plows left, if you know what time to expect them, maybe you can change your day and save yourself a little bit of hassle. And so just getting that information out is important. So there's some lowline fruits, there's some other probably harder policy trades that we'll have to discuss about how we, how we carve out the burden of managing snow. But it's definitely not just as easy for, as most residents have it where they just walk out and clean out their driveway. It's a very complicated process here in the city and we're going to take it in a very thoughtful way when we, when we make all of our recommendations to the city commission. So your honor, I propose that we wrap up the staff and the public portions of comment. We'll turn it back over to the city commission and proceed as you see fit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, city manager. Commissioner Pop, or Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan has some comments and he has to leave a little early soul to the first crack.
Appreciate that. I do have to get out for another commitment. You know, I, I think it's, it was very important to have this meeting tonight, but, but I think the city of Marquette does an excellent job. And I think the fact that hardly anybody is here kind of speaks volumes about that. You know, I think a lot of people are satisfied. Yes, you know, we all complain when the plow comes by and dumps it in the driveway, but we understand it's a necessary, necessary evil, I guess, of getting the street in front of our house plowed, so. And I, I don't think we're going to change, you know, change to the kind of community where, where people can't drive their cars in the winter. I think that's, that's something that, that people have, you know, want to do, not only here, but everywhere. The, I, I think we also didn't mention the fact that we not only have a lot of streets to take care of, but we've got a lot of hilly streets. And I, you know, it amazes me that we can get around in our community with all the hills we have and the fact that the crews are out there sanding the streets and making them available. We get used to big numbers, but you know, we are spending over a billion dollars a year to, to deal with snow removal. And we could probably spend $2 million and make it a lot better, but I'm not sure that that's what the citizens want us to do, so. I, I think we're doing a good job and I really appreciate it. The only thing I, the only caution I would note is I believe in the winter cities idea, I believe in the walkable community, but you know, if you talk the talk, you got to walk the walk. So I think we got to be careful as to how much we bite off on that because we still live in a place where we get a lot of snow and cold every year. Thank you.
Commissioner Benzey?
Well, I have a few things. I'd also like to say thank you to all the departments that work hard on this because I do think it's exceptional and as one person pointed out, just drive outside of Marquette and see what other cities are doing in the UP. I don't think they go around and plow many of their sidewalks at all. So I'd like to thank everyone for the collaboration and communication on that because it's very apparent as a commissioner. A few comments I made, the fire hydr program, I think that's excellent. I think one of our departments at the city that's best at educating is the fire department. They're in our schools, they do a lot of excellent outreach, they're the ones that arrive to hook up their stuff. I'm wondering if they couldn't help get the word out about that because I think it's an important thing and I think you would have neighborhoods, you'd have neighborhood kids that would want to go out and help with that. I think it's a great idea. Wright Street North, that, I took that comment to heart. Often I like to go for long walks and maybe we could look to see how well we're connecting that area or if there's one more connector that wouldn't cost too much to extend it that way. Because I do see a lot of people using the ice rinks and walking in that street too. So that was a good one. The difference in doing snow removal costs, pros and cons, I guess that, that would be something when it comes to budget, I'd like to see. Is it worth spending another $50,000 on or are we looking at hundreds of thousands? I think that's going to be a big determination going forward on what we do, should we do anything differently? I do have friends that visit from Duluth quite often and they do have the opposite side of the street winter parking and I can tell you one thing they notice when they come here is how clean our streets are. A lot of times you do not get people in a college town that move their car and they will keep racking up tickets. And what happens after time, they've said, is that every street, every block has bumps and things that just freeze up and over time, it's not as clean. So I, I would prefer to stick with what we're doing and, and push the education thing with the community. The last thing, one comment I've received that I, I can't quite get an answer to or haven't been able to yet is, and it has to do with the winter freeze-ups, and I know we don't have the engineering department here, but how, how are we looking at how far down we're burying the water in sewer pipes with new reconstruction on our streets? I think a lot of residents are wondering, what does it cost to maybe put them down farther? If we get more winters like this, there's obviously a benefit with the frost depths going so deep. And I think most people would think that this might be a trend that's going to come back, if not next year, in the next few years. And so that's one question I think residents have for the engineering department is, are we looking at things like that when we do total reconstructions to help take care of some of the freeze-up issues? So that's all I have. Thank you.
I agree that I think that the city is doing a very good job. When I came here tonight, I was expecting more people with more negative comments about the state of how everything is being, how the streets are, how the sidewalks are, but it does not appear to be that way. I think people are maybe, for the most part, satisfied. I know when I get up in the morning and I, you know, drive out, the streets are just clear. I mean, they're, you know, they're plowed, we don't have a problem. I've lived in other cities, not a lot, but Marquette is by far a better city for streets and sidewalks. So I think we're doing a good job, wish we had more money, we could do more. Plowing the sidewalks could be a good thing, I mean, if, you know, but that's a lot of money. But overall, I think we're doing a good job.
Okay. I'm kind of hoarse. My few comments for staff were things that I wanted you guys to look into for when we have future things. As I also echo Commissioner Combenzi with north of Bright Street area, how much extra that would cost us to, there is not a sidewalk area and I've experienced that myself as well. Also how much additionally it would be to do more hedge cutting. Right now, I know that you guys have already done the hedge cutting, but I almost hit somebody the other day driving because I went to turn. And also what I'm doing, the, when I was looking online beforehand at the sidewalk map plowing, it was confusing for somebody that doesn't understand the plowing because it doesn't indicate what side of the road that is being plowed. Because I know in my neighborhood, it's only one side and not the other, but it shows that it's being plowed, so it, I'm pretty sure you're only doing one side because I know it's not my side. So that was a little confusing as an outsider to it. And as far as the parking ban, I as well like it as it is because I think the other way would just be just as much confusing for people if you switch days, all of those things. And then, oh, I did have a question for staff too, as to far as people getting the winter parking ban tickets, how many do you actually, if they have a good reason, if, you know, that is, that problem with it's 2:00 in the morning, they leave their car in the street, they didn't want to drive home drunk, how often do you guys let leisure on that kind of thing? And that's all.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of comments. I think probably one of our biggest challenges is, and I'm not sure what the solution is, but the downtown banks. I think, you know, somehow we, we need to come up with a way to remove those. Perhaps, you know, I, I've never liked it when the city came along and removed my snowbank in front of my house. I never thought, thought it really provided me any benefit because I still have huge banks on each side of my driveway to, which my wife can't see over in her little bug anyway and I can in my truck. But, you know, perhaps we ought to forego a little bit of the bank removal in the neighborhoods and, and pay more attention to removing the banks downtown or, or maybe when you plow, instead of putting the snow up, maybe put front end loaders down and, and dump it into trucks. It'd take you a little longer to clear the streets, but I think that's a, that's a big thing. And for the most part, we, we've, we've got very good snow removal and we, we can't really complain about it. Perhaps sometime in the future, it might be nice if we could find out what the actual cost of the, of the hydrant clearing program is to see, you know, we could tell the, the citizens the benefit of a hydrant adoption program, but perhaps in, we might run into problems where, I've thought of it at times, I've just kitty-cornered my house, I've got a hydrant and I've always thought of going over there and done it, doing it in about the time I think of it, or if you get reminded of it, that there's a city front end loader over there doing it. But that's, that's something we might want to look at. But, and also, you know, when we talk about parking and the winter parking ban, I, you know, a solution might be is to allow front yard parking. You know, years ago, that was, there was a big controversy when we, we denied it and perhaps what we ought to do is allow front yard parking when there is snow cover on and not front yard parking when there is not snow cover. And let people clear their front yards if they want and to, to allow parking. That might be, you know, one of the solutions to, to relieve a little problem for some of the, the tenants and the renters and, and also the, the pushback the police department gets from, from parking ban tickets. That's all I have. Any, any last comments, any citizen wants to make or any one from staff? Well, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I'd like to thank staff for the presentation, it was comprehensive and I think I learned a lot more about our snow removal than, than I did before and, and so it was, it was interesting and I look forward to, to following up on some of this stuff. I guess if there's nothing more, then we're adjourned.